Welcome to Wayne's World, rising above the noise and confusion.
It's Wayne's Word.
Happy Halloween. This is airing on Halloween, although it'll be available for a lot longer than that. Halloween is a day when we see children dress up as ghouls and goblins and witches, and they go around the neighborhood and they knock on doors and do trick or treat. And it's all sort of in fun and schools have Halloween parties. I know that Catholic school my children used to attend, they have trunk or treat party in the parking lot. So it's all harmless fun most of the time, but there really is evil in the schools. There are satanic forces in our schools and I know that people are gonna laugh when they hear that and they're gonna think that that's just plain silly. But I'm here to tell you that it's not and I have two experts with me today to discuss it. Pastors Kelly and Todd Huddennall, did I pronounce that correctly?
You did.
Very good. And tell us about your church. You ever hear a story that makes you sit up and think, if he can do it, why not me? Scott Riopel built his life from scratch. No handouts, just hustle. Now he runs Interstate Roofing, part of the One Solutions family, and he's showing others the path out. If you're ready to change your life, follow him on Facebook and Instagram, at Big underscore Scott 303. This isn't just roofing, this is a way up. An integrity bank and trust. Integrity is more than a name. It's a way of doing business. My family does business there and I can tell you, they are the friendliest and easiest we have worked with over decades as entrepreneurs and small business owners. Integrity's expert and friendly personnel offer home loans, treasury management, personal banking and other services for every stage of life. Integrity puts customers first, living up to its name.
Yeah, our church is called Radiant Church. We have two campuses here in Colorado Springs. It's a church that's been in the community a long time. We've been here almost 20 years.
Okay, great. Now, I'm looking at a website here, SchoolyardSecrets.com. And this focuses primarily on school district D20 in northern Colorado Springs. It's a pretty important school district in that this is home to the United States Air Force Academy. Focus on the family is in that district. And I think a lot of children from, whose parents work at Shreve Air Force Base, go to those schools. So it's a pretty high-end school district in terms of funding and academics and outcomes. I'm reading from this website, I don't know who puts this together, but it says in El Paso County, the line between heated politics and dangerous incitement has become disturbingly blurred. At the center of the controversy is, and I'm not gonna say this person's name, I don't wanna give this person the pleasure of me saying his name. But this is a professing Satanist. He used to be involved with the Democratic Party here in El Paso County, whose incendiary recent rhetoric is becoming increasingly alarming. He's been featured on television news for this type of thing. This person has called for actual violence and he is a professed Satanist. And George is gonna bring up a couple of examples of Satanists who show up at D20 school board meetings to talk about their satanic beliefs and their desire to have a club called After School Satan in our schools here in El Paso County, Colorado. And so George, why don't you play a couple of these clips and then we'll discuss them?
I'm Mel. I'm a member of TST Colorado and also an ordained minister of Satan with TST. I just wanted to offer an invocation that we commonly use with TST. Let us stand now unbowed and unfettered by arcane doctrines, born of fearful minds and darkened times. Let us embrace the Luciferian impulse to eat of the tree of knowledge and dissipate our blissful and comforting delusions of old. Let us demand that individuals be judged for their concrete actions, not their fealty to arbitrary social norms or illusory categorizations. Let us reason our solutions with agnosticism in all things, holding fast only to that which is demonstrably true. Let us stand firm against any and all arbitrary authority that threatens the personal sovereignty of one or all. That which will not bend must break, and that which can be destroyed by truth should never be spared its device. Sorry. It is done. Hail Satan.
Hail Satan, she says. Okay, would you play the next clip, George?
Good evening, everyone. I have children, two children, that are currently in District 20 schools. And I've recently heard and witnessed that some of you would like to be known that your religion belongs here. You know, right here inside this beautiful government building that is paid for by the taxpayers of District 20, the state of Colorado and the federal government. The taxpayers that consist of a vast variety of backgrounds, religions, cultures, beliefs, beliefs and non-religious points of view. So in the spirit of religious pluralism and religious freedom, I wanted to come here tonight to introduce myself as a member of the Satanic Temple Colorado, an ordained minister of the Satanic Temple and the National Campaign Director for a fun little program that continues to make national news headlines called After School Satan Club. So my suggestion to you is to cut the crap and remember that you represent a very diverse population of constituents, many of who are here tonight. Remember that diversity is what makes our country great. And so going forward, please sweep up your crumbs and clean up your mess because...
Time's up.
So he cut her off before she could do her hail Satan. But these are not the only ones. There's this other person I was speaking about who's very active in the D20 school board meetings and such. And I'm not gonna say that person's name, but this person has advocated for books in our libraries that absolutely should not be there. This is someone who posted on Facebook, being nice is overrated. Just find a good lawyer and choose violence. And this person is advocating for books in schools that are... Here's one that tells children how to have sex with adults. How Sex Apps Work. This is a book in the libraries in D20 schools because this person insists on them being there and has contacted the Freedom From Religion Foundation and gotten their lawyers on board and to keep these books in schools. How Sex Apps Work. Upload a tiny picture of yourself to the app. The app works out your location. The app tells you who the nearest homosexuals are. You then chat to them. Because they are near, it is easy to meet up with them. If you're looking for the ubiquitous fun, the words sex, shag and the F-word ironically are banned on most sex apps. Be upfront about it and then no one's feelings are going to get hurt. The book literally instructs children how to go out and have same-sex sexual relations with adults. And the major advocate of this is a professed Satanist. What do you know about this movement? I think that the people doing this, some of them will tell you, oh, it's all in jest. We're kidding. It's fun. What do you think?
Well, one way that they portray themselves seems to be as non-religious and as people who want pluralism in our society. And that's their emphasis and they're very strong on abortion rights. They're very strong on things like having these books in school libraries. And they put it under the category...
And taking away parental rights. Don't forget that.
Yes, taking away parental rights. But that books in the library under the name of free speech. When the books are pornographic at least and evil, I would actually categorize them as. I've seen and heard some of the excerpts from some of these books and I felt like taking a bath afterwards. It was absolutely disgusting. It's stuff I'm never subjected to as an adult.
You wouldn't, yeah, as an adult, they're offensive. And for children, this is just completely unacceptable. And it's dangerous. It's dangerous to tell a child how to find an adult sex partner.
It's disgusting.
Adults having sex with children is rape.
It is.
The people pushing this, like I say, that one of the lead characters behind this is a professed Satanist. He wears Satan on his shirt and he goes to the ACLU and the Freedom From Religion Foundation. And they would desperately like to get this After School Satan Club started in our schools. What do you know about the After School Satan Club?
I don't know a whole lot about it. I can't say that I have studied or researched it in depth. But what I do know, Wayne, is parents have got to wake up. Parents have got to wake up and pay attention to what is happening. Satan is a real entity and those who partner with Satan are going after the kids. They're targeting the kids. If they can't kill them in the womb, then they go after them as early as they possibly can through cartoons and animated programming and video games and education through these pornographic books, you know? I want to say again, we recently had a team come into our church. They actually just used our church as a venue for letting parents know about the books, the pornographic. And I don't even know pornographic doesn't feel extreme enough to explain clearly how demonic, how horrific, how ghastly this material is that the Satanists are trying to spoon, not to spoon feed, but force down the throats of children. I mean, this is child molestation at its worst.
Violent sex described in these books.
It's unbelievable.
Racist terms, the N-word is frequent, it's common in the kind of books that we're talking about. And they insist on them being in our schools. Now, you mentioned that some of these people are going directly after a school board members.
Yes.
Explain that to us.
Okay, so I have been to the school board meetings. And you get two minutes for public comment. So you sign up for public comment. And what I saw firsthand is that the Satanists, those who have partnered with Satan, they sign up for public comment. But so many times when I've been there, they use their two minutes to go after and attack board members, school board members, that are standing between the evil, this darkness, and the children. They step in there to boldly and heroically protect the children. And so the Satanists sign up for two minutes of public comment. And then I've seen them do it again and again where they just viciously attack. They will target one board member at a time. And I'm a prayer warrior, Wayne. And so I go into these board meetings prayed up. I've had people in our congregation who would go before the board meeting and pray around the perimeter of the building. And then we go in just to sit there and pray. And I've had the Satanists sit right behind me for the board meetings. And it's interesting for people that don't go to board meetings. Listen, and you don't understand what's happening in our schools. You have to wake up. You have to wake up now before it's too late. And we can't just have a tiny little remnant of people that are fighting. We need all the parents to wake up and stand between this horrific force of evil that's trying to come in to kill, steal and destroy our children, their innocence, and to break them down from a young age to where evil and darkness and pornography and sexual immorality, perversion is no longer darkness, but it's acceptable and even normal. That's the agenda, that get them when they're young and brainwash them to strip their innocence away and convince them that there's nothing wrong with this. This is just normal. I'm sorry. I'm very impassioned about this.
They claim to be Satanists, yet if you push them on it, they'll say, well, actually, we're just secularists. We just don't like religion.
Right.
But that's not really true, is it?
No.
Do you have evidence to the contrary that they actually pray to Satan?
Oh, yeah.
Tell us what you know about that.
We've been told they pray to Satan against us and put curses on us. And I've had people come to me concerned and even said, you know, Pastor Kelly, I hope you have people praying for you. And I said, first of all, God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind. And Wayne, we wrote a book a few years back and it really is pertinent to what we're talking about today. And the name of that book is Holy Rebel because the Lord showed us years ago, so many years ago, we are in a real war here. We are in a real spiritual battle. And the reason that hell and the forces of darkness have been able to come in and bring this kind of demonic, satanic garbage into our schools, into our libraries, they've been allowed to do that because Christians have been sleeping, because we have been silent and we have been compliant. And we just, you know, it's too messy and it's uncomfortable. And well, I just wanna put my fingers in my ears and say, la, 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 la. I don't wanna hear. I don't wanna know what evil is taking place. And so while we have been living our best life now in the Christian church, hell has come in in a fury and done an incredible job of destroying innocents in our children and trying to take them in to this gross, gross darkness. But several years ago, the Lord showed me that there are two kinds of people in the earth. And there are two kinds, really, they're rebels. Wayne, you're a rebel.
I would say so.
I'm a rebel. Todd's a rebel. Every person listening is a rebel of one kind or another. You are either partnering with heaven, with Father, Son and Holy Spirit in a holy rebellion against hell's demonic agenda, or you're partnering with hell. You know, I think there are a lot of people, they say, well, I'm not a Satanist. If you're complying with evil, you're on evil's side. And so you're either a holy rebel rebelling against hell's agenda with Father, Son and Holy Spirit, or you're an unholy rebel and you're partnering with the Satanists in their unholy agenda.
Well, all it takes for evil to triumph is for good people to do nothing. And I can't think of a greater hell on earth. I've talked to people who have been molested as children by adults, which these books are advocating and instructing children to be molested by adults.
It's horrific.
That's hell on earth. That's hell. That is hell right here without anybody having to die and go someplace. That would be hell for those children.
And it causes trauma for many, many years, maybe the rest of their life.
Sure.
But Wayne, if parents knew what we know, if they read the trash, and trash is not a good enough, is not a sufficient word. It is demonic, satanic, gross darkness. They would be horrified if they knew this is in the libraries of the schools where their babies attend.
I'm amazed that these books have been allowed to stay in the libraries. They're still there. People know about them. I think most parents are simply tuned out to it.
Yeah. It's uncomfortable.
And I think others just simply don't believe it. They think we're exaggerating.
We're not.
So tell us more about the book. What have you found in terms of evil forces in this country and how that manifests in polite society?
Well, when we were talking about, is this just simply a political agenda or is it more than that? It's more than that. There's more to it. I can't exactly trace this, but let me just give you one example. Not long ago, at our home, we found on one side a crow that had been killed and obviously killed by somebody. And then on the other side, there was some kind of goo. It looked like intestines and blood or something. And we couldn't clean it up. We had the hardest time cleaning it up.
And it was smeared on the side of our house. And we have a doorbell ring camera, but I'm the one that installed it and I don't know what I'm doing. So it had a very narrow view of what it would pick up. So the people that did this were very strategic. You know, they put their satanic concoction in a spot where the camera wouldn't pick it up and their crow carcass on another spot. And we actually have a friend who is very studied when it comes to satanic ritual. And he said, oh, yeah, that's a satanic, I don't remember what he called it. Something that they cooked up and they put it on your house to curse you and your family. But go ahead.
Well, what ended up happening then, Kelly, during this time after that happened, developed an incredible amount of inflammation in her body and a great deal of pain. And we had a friend contact us and they said, you need to draw a bloodline around your property.
The friend didn't know about the other things. I mean, she didn't know. And it was her husband actually that said, you have to call Pastor Todd. He said, because I'm convinced Satanists are trying to put curses on them. And they need to go around their house, just take grape juice like you do in communion and just decree and apply the blood of Jesus around your property.
And so we're doing it and you know, it feels a little funny. It's like, really? Is this what we're supposed to be doing? But of course, we were praying and invoking the Spirit of God and speaking in the authority of the name of Jesus.
Well, to clarify invoking, that can sound funny to people that aren't... We were simply decreeing and declaring the name of the Lord.
It's where invocation comes from. It's welcoming the Holy Spirit. But we go into our house and the minute Kelly steps across the door of the threshold, every bit of inflammation left her body instantaneously. And at that moment, I'm convinced, you know, this is real. There were some real curses placed on us.
And so now every day, we decree the power of the blood of Jesus over us, over our family, over our church and against every satanic covenant, contract, incantation, spell. And we command those curses to go back on the heads of those who tried to bring them.
And we also put in a surveillance camera system.
All around our house. So all the Satanists that are listening today, we have cameras all around our property. We're watching you.
What can parents do about all of this in terms of, I mean, they're not at school board meetings.
They need to be there.
They need to show up, don't they?
The Satanists are showing up.
They are. They seem obsessed with it.
Because they want your kids. Satan wants your kids.
And it's not just showing up and saying hail Satan. And if you don't believe in Satan, who cares if they say hail Satan? If you're not a spiritual person and you don't believe in anything religious, that would be pretty harmless. But that's not all they do. They actually want harmful curriculum in the schools. And as we mentioned, the books that are just downright evil, that are harmful. They exact harm on children.
Well, something else that I've seen with this group is that they don't seem that concerned about the church in general. But it's any church that's willing to be salt and light and get involved in the community and try to make a difference in some of these areas, they have real problems with it. And so you've probably heard the term Christian nationalist. That is thrown around a lot.
I hear that a lot. I'm not sure what it is.
Yeah, I don't know any of them. Because what they say it is, is people who want to control politics and control the system. And you know, as far as we're concerned, we just wanna serve our community. And we feel like, for instance, with the schools, the best thing is to educate children, to educate them with reading, writing and arithmetic. Don't try to educate them or influence them or indoctrinate them into these evil practices and lifestyles that are ungodly and unrighteous and destructive. And so our idea with that is simply to present the best way that people can live and present our views in the public forums, not to take over or not to control anybody or to dominate anybody, but to serve our community. And so I don't know anybody that really fits this Christian nationalist kind of straw man that's out there. There probably are some. But that's not the intention or the heart of those that they are so upset about. It's just if you get involved in any way beyond the church house, then it becomes a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not seeing people show up at school board meetings trying to proselyze children or turn the schools into religious schools.
No.
Even though there have been multiple court rulings recently that easily could put prayer back into public schools. You had the Espinoza v. Montana ruling where you can, you know, that allows public funds. I mean, we all pay taxes and that will allow scholarships and vouchers to go to pay tuition at schools that are sectarian. You had a case out of Missouri involving a Missouri Lutheran school that had to do with public financing of sectarian schools. There've been a number of others. And I know that there is a push right now in Colorado to start the first public Christian school. This would be a charter school. And they would be able to teach the Bible, teach Christian beliefs in the school. Now, that's a very controversial thing, but I think that people, when they think about religion and they talk about separation of church and state, which doesn't really exist. That's nowhere in the law.
That's right.
Not in the Constitution.
But they think only in terms of Christianity. If, I mean, if there's an after-school Satan, that's not religion. So some pretty non-Christian religions are easily working their way into our schools, whereas Christianity is kept at bay. No, no, no. That's religion. That can't go into the schools.
Well, it's a matter of values, you know? I mean, it comes back to what are the values that we're gonna encourage people in? And are we gonna encourage them toward evil? What has been considered evil? Are we gonna encourage them toward doing good to others and living lives that are helpful to the community?
They present Satan as though he's some sort of literary figure who stands for everything good, moral and right. And that's just not the case. Satan is universally, by any name, this is a universal symbol of evil, of bad things happening to people. Rape, murder, incest, bad things. Well, is there any more you'd like to discuss about this on this Halloween day? And again, we're not saying that Halloween itself is any kind of, you know, that's not celebrated as an evil holiday, I don't believe. I think most people just...
Think it's fun.
Think it's fun. But anything more you wanted to say about just the real evil that lurks in our schools and around our children?
Well, I would like to touch again on just Halloween. It is a day where the Satanists and those involved in the occult, it's considered a high holy day for those that are involved in darkness. You know, I have not participated in it, but I have just learned from those who've come out of it that just so much darkness happens on that night to bring glory and honor to Satan and even human sacrifice. So I would just say, Wayne, as a pastor and as a parent, you need to be very aware of the doors you're opening with your family and with your children. As for us and our church, we do something called Light Up the Night, where we don't wanna give that night over to the darkness. And we want people to have, on that night, have a safe place where they can bring their families. And we're going to have booths and they will be biblically based. They will all point to Jesus and light in the darkness. And you know, it will be a safe place of light on a night of great darkness. So I would just encourage parents to think twice, especially if you're a Christian, to think twice about and really pray about celebrating what the dark side celebrates and consider what the Lord would have you do on that night to bring light into a lot of darkness.
And when we're talking about Satanists and Satanism, when you look at the scripture, if you go to the Bible, if you believe the Bible, he is not just a fictitious character. He's a real spiritual entity, that there is a real maleficent force in this world. And I think if you see all the evil in the world, you realize a lot of it's beyond human evil. There's a force behind it. There's a dark power and it's very real.
If you're non-religious, if you're a completely secular person or if you're an atheist even, it is undeniable that there are evil and good forces in this world. It's almost like electricity. There's a positive and a negative. And evil and good are constantly battling each other in this world. And hopefully, good always wins out in the end. But evil things happen. Car crashes are evil. You know, suffering is evil. When people die too young, that's evil. When people are hurt or violated in any way, that's evil. When people are hurt or violated in any way, that's evil. Would like to encourage, you know, this is something we're talking about in District 20 of one particular metro area in Colorado, but this after-school Satan is a nationwide push.
Yeah.
And these are the same people who, they don't just, it's not innocent, because these are the same people who push for these awful books in schools that actually bring harm to children. They tell them how to harm themselves and teach them evil hateful words. So this is happening all across the country, but I would encourage everyone to go to schoolyardsecrets.com, schoolyardsecrets.com, and you'll get a taste for what's going on in our public schools. And I want to thank you both for coming in to talk about this. It's been very enlightening, and I wasn't looking forward to having this show, because it's kind of a depressing topic, but I think people need to know about it, and that's what this podcast is about.
And be activated. People need to be activated. Come to the school board meetings and support those board members that are sacrificing, their families are sacrificing of their time and their resources, their energy, they're sacrificing so much to stand for the protection of the children, and so we have got to get behind them and support them.
And there's also a school board election coming up.
That's right. It's incredibly important who gets elected to a school board, because someone like this, these avowed Satanists can get themselves elected to school boards, and they can elect their friends, and the teachers' union is constantly controlling the outcome of school board elections, and in Colorado, that's the same teachers' union that thinks the greatest source of evil is capitalism. They put it in writing, that capitalism is a source of evil, which I disagree with heartily.
I do, too.
I think it's a force for, it's a benevolent force. So you need to know who's running for your, it is the school board that ultimately determines what happens to your children in public schools, so pay attention and find the right candidates.
There are voter guides available, so people can vote intelligently. They can look and see what the candidates stand for. Wayne, if I can say one last thing, when we are talking about dealing with this darkness and in our school board system, the Lord showed me after going to board meetings and seeing, I could tell you stories if we had time, the crazy things that would happen, and the Lord showed me that the Satanists are showing up to intimidate so that they can eliminate, and then they can dominate. And I think what happens so often is people become intimidated by the darkness, and greater is he who is in us than he that is in the world. When you are following Jesus Christ, when he's your Lord and Savior, you have the sovereign God of the universe with you and for you, and if God be for you, who can be against you? I just want to encourage parents, do not let the darkness intimidate you and eliminate you so that they can dominate. We've got to stand up and be holy rebels rebelling against Satan's agenda against our kids.
Amen. How can, how can my listeners and viewers get your book?
Well, we have it available at our church campuses, but we also, you can of course get it on amazon.com. We also have an audible version of the book as well.
Okay, I look forward to reading it, and thank you both very much. Appreciate you coming to the studio.
Absolutely. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne. Thanks for being a holy rebel.
Thank you, and happy Halloween.